Kathleen Stein. They won't let everybody speak.
It'll be about thirty minutes.
I would recommend letting them do it at the beginning.
Oh, not the, not the beginning, at the end. There's only one person. Pardon?
No.
He's game, so you watch. Call to order, regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, October 4th, 2021. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one public commenter at the beginning of the meeting, just to refresh people's, who haven't been here before, public comment at the beginning of the meeting is appropriate to the agenda items we're discussing, and then the public comment that we'll take at the end of the meeting can cover just about any topic. So we have our only speaker for this session would be Aaron Laniv, who is here to talk about water chemical bids. Mr. Laniv, if you have three minutes, and just please state your name for the record.
My name is Aaron Laniv, and I came here tonight to talk about you buying chemicals for the water. Why would you buy chemicals to clean the water when you don't give a shit about black people? You destroyed a goddamn memorial. You guys are fucking clowns. You're a goddamn clown. I'm not gonna shut up. I'm fucking sick of your shit. All of you guys are goddamn clowns. This is not gonna be a normal business meeting.
I'm going to ask that people do not applaud and do not shout out at this meeting. This is a business meeting, and we have rules of decorum, and this is what we're doing tonight. So I'm going to ask you to not do that, please.
Black Lives Matter!
Black Lives Matter!
Black Lives Matter!
Black Lives Matter!
Jelani's life matters!
Jelani's life matters!
Black Lives Matter!
Black Lives Matter!
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I would like to make a motion that we waive the rule that public comment for things off the agenda, go at the end, and let them speak at the beginning.
Do you have, we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Just let me have a nod of approval if you agree with that. It's really not an agenda item. Are you good with that or not? Okay, so we'll get right to it. First speaker is Ann Roundtree. I'm asking you to please not do that at this meeting. If you want our attention, please follow our rules. They're not strict rules, so we're just asking you to please do that.
Listen to the people!
The rules are that you have three minutes to speak, and just please state your name for the, for the record.
Antonette Roundtree, and I'm with the Afro-Socialists. We mobilized us to be here tonight and Black Lives Matter, and I just wanna speak from a mother's perspective. My daughter was beaten and killed in the city of Normal in 2019, so I know what it's like to lose a child. To want your child to continue to be remembered and not forgotten, I understand what that feels like, so I know what Carmen is going through. So to ask that her child be seen so that he's not forgotten, we gotta remember that we didn't even look for him, remember? We didn't have the staff to get out there and do what our jobs told us to do and find this woman's child. We couldn't do that. The least we could've done was left his face outside. A memory is all she asked, and y'all couldn't do that much. It's very disappointing. My daughter would be here today had there been a proper investigation. The same department, Normal, that I asked to investigate her abuse ended up investigating her murder. All we ask is to be heard. All we ask is that y'all care enough to do your jobs when it come to us, 'cause right now, I'm a mother that carries her daughter on a necklace. This is all I got, and it's not fair. Your system took her away from me, and this is what I got back. It's not right. That woman wanted her sons outside on that picture. Two hours before we organized tonight, you guys put it up in the window? That's a Band-Aid on a scar that can't be wrapped up with a Band-Aid. Y'all need to do a whole lot more than that. We are disappointed as fuck, sir. We are tired. We don't deserve this at all. Y'all need to do better.
Next speaker is Ishmael Adamic.
I got it for ya. It's Ishmael Ademir.
All right.
Yeah. So I'm a, I'm a student at ISU. I'm also a graduate teaching assistant. I have students. We're all very scared at ISU because we do not feel comfortable on this campus. My students are afraid because this town is, y'all aren't, you're doing your jobs. We're supposed to feel safe when we go to campus. We're supposed to feel safe as graduate students walking around Normal, but for some reason, when we're trying to have recognition of our own students that have passed and we put up a memorial in this, in this town, y'all wanna just take it down, and that's not right. I'm also upset because I've recently learned all the improper conduct that the police have engaged in when it comes to actually investigating this case. They don't care. They don't care, and it's absurd and it's upsetting to me. And so I just wanted to say that. I'm really disappointed, but I don't know, fuck you.
Next speaker is Jamon Katari, I think, is that correct?
Yes, that's close enough. I just really thought it was funny. I really felt it was funny, like, we came in here and y'all started talking about rules. Rules? Let's think about Jelani's constitutional rights, right? Equal protection under the laws, right? The man went missing, he was reported missing on the 4th. His body was recovered on the September 23rd. His mural was out there for three days. We could, we still don't know what happened to him, right? If I can tell you what happened, where he, where he was found in Peru, that's a sundowntown for what y'all did, if y'all didn't know that. And I can, I can guarantee y'all this, Normal and Bloomington would be sundowntowns if it were not for the university here, and that doesn't even make it much better. So let's, let's, let's talk about, because you guys said we need to find the appropriate place to move him. I only have two demands here. Either you get in touch with his mother to see where she would like it, or you put it back where it was, because fuck the rules. No, we have, there are no rules. We are bound to respect when our lives don't matter. And then y'all look around, y'all saw what happened last summer, you're super fucking surprised, but then, oh well, we keep dying. And so let's just go through the police case, right? Some of the rules that they broke, right? First, they had initially, they had the inability to assign multiple investigators to Jelani's case. Second, when that one investigator was overwhelmed, then only did they assign more investigators. There was a failure to utilize current investigative and analytical tools. His body's found on September 4th, not identified until September 23rd. There's a failure to secure surveillance, failure to secure or request surveillance videos from nearby establishment where he was last seen, failure to discover his clothes, where his body was found, they were found in the river by students, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, one of the last places he was seen? The Bone Student Center. That's one of the last places we know of. I worked there. I have to go there every day. How do y'all think I feel? I bet y'all feel some pressure right now, 'cause it's a lot of people here, but I feel fucking scared for my life, and there's nothing we can do about it, except take that, right? And so I want y'all to think about, and that's, this is really an ad for me, I really want y'all to quit y'all jobs and like, come and like, be with us, because I know y'all not used to seeing this many people here. So like, come, quit your jobs, and let's find what happened to Jelani, right? Because does his life matter? I don't know. Have we found out what happened to him yet? Let's ask why, why does an unarmed black person get killed every twenty hours by police? Why are, am I more likely as a black male to be pulled over by a cop? Four point four times more likely to pull it over than a white person here? Why am I expected to graduate less than white students? Why is the wealth gap shortening and, why is wealth gap widening instead of getting smaller? Why are all these things happening? And then y'all stay, move it to ISU. Let me tell you about ISU. In 2019, we had an anti-black ISU movement because Larry, at least the president at the time, canceled black homecoming and then sent out a defamatory email defaming the black students we're trying to organize. 2020, all Red Bird Lives Matter was what Larry Lyons said. Our lives didn't matter to him there. He's gone now, but much hasn't changed. And then now we have, we have what happened to Jelani Day. Shit keeps happening, and y'all aren't changing anything, and I don't get any sleep 'cause of y'all, 'cause I swear I lose sleep 'cause of this. So y'all not gonna get no sleep 'cause of me. I swear to God, I will be back every town hall meeting until we find out what happened to him. And I swear to God, this is just the beginning. Do better. Quit your fucking jobs. Y'all truly aren't saving any lives, right? Right? Right, let's, let's be honest, right? The cops aren't following this. Y'all haven't, to the best of my knowledge, y'all haven't reached out to the states and federal governments, and maybe before y'all quit y'all jobs, that's something y'all can do. Reach out to Governor Pritzker, all of y'all emailing, do a joint email saying, "We need federal assistance," because we don't have any idea what happened to us, to a student here. And it's crazy that we all know what happened, and right before Family Weekend, a time that people could've came down and possibly learned about him. Y'all took that away from the family, you took that away from us, and now y'all wanna sit up here and talk about fucking rules. Mayor Kuss, I'd call you, your honor. Fuck those rules, and fuck the town of Normal, fuck the town council, because y'all ain't doing shit to protect us. And until we get the peace and justice we deserve, y'all won't see any peace. Y'all won't see any people now in the streets. Y'all won't see the shit that y'all usually like to see. Do fucking better. Quit your fucking jobs. Stop being silly ass people.
Our next speaker is Lauren Gutcha.
It's a long walk. My name is Lauren Gutcha. I grew up just down the street, across from Ace Hardware. I have been here my whole life. Little emotional, I'm gonna cool down. I am an art teacher. I graduated from ISU four years ago, and I know the importance of art and what it means, and I was so upset to hear that this mural was taken down, because art isn't just an object, it's not just a thing, it's personal. It's heart and soul, and when this was taken down, it was told that that heart and soul and his personal life doesn't really matter. And it was just really upsetting to hear, and I hope that we can work together as a community to make it better and heal that, so, thank you.
Next speaker is Marcos Mendez.
Hello, once again, Marcos Mendez. The reason I'm here today first is to, is to honor Jelani Day and to sing condolences to his family and friends standing out there today. That's the reason I was there. The reason I'm here today is because we sat here in late 2016, early 2017, and presented a 2040 Vision Plan that addressed things like engaging community. And some of the things that we talked about in those rooms, and even since with the Community Culture and Engagement Award, was about black and brown people not feeling safe in this community. That was 2016 and 17. And here we are. We talked about the policies and the, the education that people were getting here within government to ensure this doesn't happen, and yet here we are. I would, what I would like to see is a re-engagement of what was put forth to the town council in 2016 and 2017. If there's not gonna be a re-engagement of that, or maybe there is engagement in that, maybe there is something happening already that, that was, that had a hand in making this decision. I guess that's the piece that we're also missing is the taking down of a mural, who was engaged in that conversation and in those decisions? And why was there such urgency? I'll read one last, well, one piece of the 2040 Vision, and it says, "The needs of residents..." No, I've lost it, however. I guess I would urge everybody to go out and take a look at that Vision 2040 document, which is on the town website, and start asking questions about how you can engage this council and how this council can assist the community to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. Because I think that if we start to have those conversations with community, we see that they, that we show up. And we wanna have those conversations with government, but we need government to also listen to those conversations with us as well. And I think that whenever we were here in 2016 and 2017, the board that was here at that time felt that that was important, and it was important work that needed to happen, and we needed to do it, and we needed to do it now. And I urge you, please, please reengage in those conversations with us, and we will do that with you as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristi Abel.
Hello, my name is Crystal Abel. I'm the Public Relations Officer for Bloomington Normal Democratic Socialists of America. We were one of the organizations, along with Black Lives Matter and the Afro-Socialist Caucus, that have been speaking out about this issue for the last week, ever since the mural was taken down. The press releases we've sent out obviously have gotten your attention. Being on the news has obviously gotten your attention, and the press release we sent out this morning obviously got your attention, because finally, after asking for almost a week for the mural to be put back up using plexiglass, which a council member actually told me wasn't going to be possible, and the town wouldn't pay for it, we finally had it back up. Once, you know, we put out a press release saying that we're gonna be here talking to you, and we're gonna be here making noise, and we're gonna make you listen to us. And for the whole last week, even this morning, when the press release sent out was from the Afro-Socialist Caucus, all of the news that's been covering this case, who do they wanna interview? Me. Me, a white woman. Even when the press release this morning came from our Afro-Socialists and Socialists of Color Caucus, that shows me that not only does the town, but the people covering the news in this town do not care about black lives. They don't wanna listen, they don't wanna hear what these people have to say. And at our action in front of the mural, I didn't see a single one of you there. Not a single one of you was there listening to the concerns from the community, even though it was clear that you knew we were gonna be there and we wanted you to hear us. So I really want to encourage you all to go and watch the news tonight, go and watch the footage, it's gonna be all over social media, and start listening to your constituents. Start listening to what the students and this community feel when you take actions that are harsh and without any empathy. This town needs to start addressing the racial disparities in policing here in Normal. We've heard many people talk about how black people in this community are four point four times more likely to be pulled over than I am, and that makes me scared for my neighbors. That makes me scared for ISU college students, and it breaks my heart that people are coming up to this podium and talking about how they do not feel safe in our community, and they don't have any trust in this government that's sitting before us. So with that, I just really want to encourage every single one of you to go back and listen. Listen to every single word that everybody spoke tonight, and everybody spoke at our meeting earlier in front of where the mural was. Because what you guys did by putting up the mural today, when we're threatened with a direct action, is too little, too late, and it's time to start changing that right now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angelique Rocky.
Hello, pronounced Angelique Rocky. And for those of you who don't know me, I am the founder and director of BCII Cultural Arts and Humanities, which basically means I work with the youth in our community predominantly melanated beings, so black, brown, Latino, Afro-Latino, African-American, across the board. So this doesn't just affect the college demographic, this is going, this is bleeding into our babies, because they are seeing this, they're seeing this new story. The ones that are just now starting to get a grasp on how the world works, our teenagers, our pre-teens, are just now getting a grasp on how the world works, and this is what they're getting. These are the messages that they're getting. Trauma comes in all forms, all forms, so it doesn't have to be a blunt force to the head, or, or a rape, or anything, that this could be an ongoing treatment in your society, how you are, what messages you're receiving from your educators. So what I came here today with was two messages from my youth that I train, that I mentor, both African-American. One African-American male, fifteen years old, his name is Dawson, and yes, I have their permission to share these. So when I asked them, "Do they feel seen in this community?", he says, "No, not really outside of BCII, I do not. I don't really talk to anyone, and when I try to talk about stuff that really means something or is serious, I just get pushed off." Unique is eighteen years old now, and she says that as a person, I also believe I don't get recognized in the community. One time, I started to drive from a middle school that they use still to this day, and all I got was a good job, but I wondered if it was another race, how would things be? Probably the newspaper, podcast, Unit Five website, and more. So it's not, this isn't basic, this is, this is from their mouths, and the same thing I said out there and saying here, if you're not listening to the generations that come after you, you are foolish and you are slowing down our progress. You are slowing down the progress of this, this country, this nation, the world, as it ripple effects outward. These kids are watching you. They are watching Facebook, they are watching Instagram, they're seeing all of this, and it breaks my heart, because if I lost one of these kids, I would go mad. These kids are everything, so I can only imagine. I did not know Jelani, but I do know youth that are teenage level and younger in this community, and they are necessary. They are so necessary. I myself have an Afro-Latino son, and he has Afro-Latino siblings, and I would, I, I can't even, I can't, I cannot. So let's, yours, what your job is to hear what you have been hearing. This is what pain sounds like right now. This is what pain, this is what pain sounds like, and fear and scared, all right? Like shaking, fear. If this is what fear sounds like right now, you have to listen. This is, this isn't time for, for a rule. You guys, you guys aren't listening. This is why you don't feel heard and seen, because you, you can't talk about rules when people are crying and scared. Okay? Okay, I'm done.
Our next speaker, I'm sorry, I can't read the, the writing on the name, but last name's Slithower.
For the record, my name is Jedge Slithower.
Thank you.
And before I speak, I would just like to say something really quickly. As a white person, it's really easy to ignore the problems and the issues that are facing the black community. As a white man, when I leave my dorm to go to my class, or go to breakfast, or go see my friend in one of their dorms, I don't have to worry that my life will end in the span from my dorm to a class, or my dorm to DP Does to get some calzones. So we, as white people, need to do better. We need to do better, because if we don't, then it's gonna be really, really hard for there to be change, unless you don't wanna see change, and then, anyways. So what I came here to say is that I've been here for about a month or two. I'm new to the town of Normal, but in these past two months, the town of Normal has made it clear, crystal clear, that it does not, I repeat, it does not care about black lives in this community. Town of Normal, you have showed us that Jelani, Jelani Day's life didn't matter, so we are here to show you that it does. If you don't listen to anything else for the rest of the night, I would like for the council to listen to the last things I have to say. Black lives matter. Black women matter. Black trans lives matter. Two last things. The people will be heard, and no justice, no peace. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Riley, and I'm gonna say Beyandi or Beyonce. I'm sorry, I couldn't read that.
For the record, it's Riley Beyandi. This year, I am a sophomore at Illinois State, I'm nineteen, and I signed up to vote in the town of Normal last year. I voted for all of you. So we are the people who choose who gets to make decisions. We are the people who choose who gets jobs. I'm disappointed and disgusted that you all chose to remove the mural of my peer Jelani Day. That behavior is unacceptable. This was an act of disrespect to your community, to your voters, to your students, to Jelani Day's mother, and to Jelani Day's family. This is an act of disrespect to all of the people who look like Jelani Day in this town and who have to be scared that they could be next. If that mural was of someone who looked like me, would you have taken it down in three days? You must do better for our community, and we will all be keeping your decisions in mind next time an election comes around.
Our next speaker is Trevin Gaffney.
For the record, it's Trevin Gaffney. I was gonna make comment. I really hope you've heard enough.
I really hope you've heard enough. I'm not going to waste my time, and I'm not going to insult your intelligence.
And the last speaker is Ashley, and I've got V A N, I'm sorry, Ashley.
I'm not a student here, I didn't know Jelani Day, but I support people who are supporting people. And I think it's very clear what they're after in comparison to what you're after. And you guys get told what to do left and right from whoever, I assume, a lot higher than what I'm able to comprehend right now, or what some people are able to comprehend right now. But just know that tippity-top is going to go nowhere. You've already gone as high as you can go in regards to pushing people around. So now that the people at the bottom, or proclaimed bottom, are rising up, in a sense, are at least a little more aware, a little more respectful, a little more sick of the bullshit, honestly, if I have to stand up for what I believe in, to make sure that my morals are correct when I walk into work, does that not completely obliterate what I'm working for outside of work? Right? So if you, I don't know if anyone caught that, but if you have a plan in place when you come in here as a Congresswoman, or as a Senate, as a Chairholder, whatever, and you come in here with an agenda, and your agenda is morally corrupt, and outside of here, all you're doing is doing stupid stuff, and it's not mattering, and you're going home to your husband and your kids, and you're not preaching the same message, you're fucking up our community. I can only imagine what it's like to be a student. I've been a lot of different areas, I know violence, but I know the kind of violence that comes from people who are passionate, and who will do whatever they need to do to make sure that justice is served, especially coming from this type of situation. Black lives matter. All lives matter. Black lives matter. Honesty matters. Loyalty in your word matters. When you come in here and you preach a certain thing, and you don't go out there and tell your people the same, it's shit. I'm speaking from experience. And I'm not ashamed of it. And I hope that you guys hear all these kids, all these guys, all these people. And, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can I speak up more quickly, it'll be great.
Sure.
Um, hello, my name is Ashley Daniels. I am an Illinois State student. I just transferred here this semester. Crazy thing is, over the summer, I actually got a 3.0 GPA, because I took three classes, which is the hardest thing to do if you guys are going to college. Real quick, feel free if you don't want to, but by the show of hands, how many of you have children, nieces, nephews, grandkids? Okay? Now imagine if you leave this meeting and they were all deceased. It took a week to find Jelani Day. I'm just a black person, he's just a black person. A lot of us black or brown students are not going to school to mess around and get a low GPA. We're going to school to become people like you, people that run the United States, people that want to be something greater. Jelani had a plan. No one knows what he was doing, why he was doing it, or what led him all the way to a sundown town. But he was a graduate student. Where were you when you were a grad student? Clearly, you didn't pass away because you're here. His mom didn't ask for anything. All you had to do was just leave his mural up. That's it. And you took it down. Now imagine how that would feel if your son, daughter, or grandchild passed away, similar or worse, we put a mural up and then we took it down. Just imagine that. Now imagine being in this position with everyone else angry. Now maybe you don't care about black people or brown people, maybe you're frightened because we're different, or we have the same things that we want to go for, just like you once did. But we matter too. We're here to be great. Jelani was an ISU grad student trying to be great, and he never got that chance. His mother can't even be here to speak up because she's so frustrated, because it took forever to figure out where his body was. And even then still, the news that is being thrown out about him is false. From this town to the sundown town, which I won't even mention because how many black people live there, right? Maybe you don't care. But imagine if it was your kids or grandchildren that went out like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. We'll move on with our agenda.
Excuse me, no more public comments on anything?
Uh, did you?
I got something different, I got something just quick to say, that guy get going, I get up at 4:30 in the morning.
Whoever took that mural down is intellectual mischief, why would you do that? But anyway, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about, I had six inches of raw sewage in my basement, and I would like to know what you're all going to do about it. Because 2004, 2005, on Orlando Street, you had raw sewage coming out of everybody's toilets. And I was told it's an act of God. What do you have planned for that? Just real quick.
Let's take a $4 million fucking home in the city.
Exactly. What are you guys going to do about it? Because I'm going to have to sell the home. And I was told it was an act of God, so my claim is denied. Any plans on fixing the sewage? Probably not. If you took a mural down in three days, that's disgusting. Who did that? Who's in charge of doing that? Why would you do that? I see this missing, I was wondering who this guy was, it's like, this miss, I see missing photos all over the place, you know? And the poor mom put up a mural and you took it down? Who did that? But anyway, I got to go, no plans on fixing the sewer line or anything? Mayor, you've been in charge for 20 years, so you've got an underpass, you got that bicycle thing that you did, where we rent a bike, you spent $100,000 on renting a bike, but your bicycle shop gets to repair the bicycles? How does that work?
Build some more tacky Coos buildings down here.
Sir, I need.
I got to go. Any plans on fixing the sewer?
Sir, I need your name for the record.
I told you it wasn't business as usual, we're all mad at the whole shit, and the fucking sewage.
I got to go. I get up at 4:30 in the morning, I work at a steel mill, so. Any plans? Sir, you look like you're ready to say something to me. Can I have your card? Thank you very much.
Hey, we finna be out, because, I mean, I don't know if I speak, y'all, we don't really care about what's on the agenda, but definitely fix that shit, because that's nasty. And a lot of Americans like to talk about third world countries, but think about the fact that we have most people in prison per capita in any place in the world, any developed country, and we have more people in poverty than most undeveloped countries. So quit your fucking jobs, and you, I hope I never see you again. Y'all have a good day.
We'll be back, we'll be back, we'll be back, we'll be back.
Just the Jelani.
Please replace the mural. Please replace the mural, imagine if it was your family. Please think about that, that's all his mom wanted, please.
Put the mural back right now.
Thank you.
Mayor Coos, I'd like to respond, I know we're going off topic, or off the rules a little bit. For those that are still here, thank you for coming out to speak. Having your voice heard is hard, and I appreciate that you're coming out to speak for someone that no longer can. I feel more for her family. I lost a child too, so when I saw that the town prematurely took this down, my heart broke, because we can never undo what happened, but to end the memory so soon was very insensitive. I do agree that we should have more community engagement on all issues, and I hope that the town does go forward to do that. And what I hope you guys can get out there is please have somebody come back, just take your time, tell us about Jelani. Nobody talked about him, I don't know where he's from, I don't know anything, that's what, I think that's the best thing we can do, is keep his memory alive. So, thank you.
He just wants to be a doctor. That's, he just wants to be a doctor. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
Would you please come back and take all the time so it's on the record sometime, because that's the best we can do for his family too.
Uh, we'll move on to the items considered routine in nature, and we'll be covered with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord.
I would like to pull Item B and D.
I'm sorry, B and?
D. Please come back. Please come back sometime when it's appropriate, like at the next council meeting or something.
Uh, ma'am?
I'm not trying to interrupt, I'm sorry.
I know, I understand, I understand. Thank you. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Items for the, considered for approval are the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 20th, 2021, and a resolution to accept water treatment plant chemical bids from November 2021 through October 2022. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye. Those two items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of September 29th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. On page 19, under Stormwater Fund, there's an expense for Cardno Inc. for mowing control, or for weed control, mowing, for $11,900. With Cardno, we've got a contract with them not to exceed $80,000 a year. Is this 11, or nearly $12,000 expense, is this additional?
Um, I don't believe so, I believe that's part of the contract, we pay them as they do the work, but I'm going to have to turn around to see if I can find Mr. Otto, and he's nodding, so is that an accurate statement, Mr. Otto?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, sorry. I believe that this is just an installment for the work that Cardno has performed, we pay them as they do the work.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Mr. Otto? Yes.
Alright, thank you, that's all I had.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye. Item D is a resolution conditionally approving the first addition to Silver Oaks Estate subdivision at the northeast corner of Vineyard subdivision. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Before the meeting, Ms. Reese had confirmed that this subdivision would be charged a sanitary sewer tap-on fee, which, I brought a picture of the map, which shows that this neighborhood is not in the sanitary sewer tap-on fee area, however, it has been annexed into the town by the black dotted lines, and they're being charged a sanitary sewer tap-on fee. Back in, on January 4th of 2021, there was another development that happened, same thing. They were annexed in the town, not a part of the sanitary sewer tap-on fee area, and they were not charged a sanitary sewer tap-on fee. The reason that was given, which this is reading verbatim from the minutes, Mr. Nord asked, Mr. Nord then asked questions regarding the storm and water sanitary sewer tap-on fees. Town planer Mercy Davidson responded that this property is not in a tap-on area that is designated on the town's map. And I stated that I'm concerned about treating developers unfairly with development and tap-on fees. So my question is, what is different about the development that's before us today that's getting charged the fees versus the one that's not, because they're both identified on the map similarly?
The difference would be, one has an annexation agreement that when the property was annexed, the developer agreed to pay the sanitary sewer tap-on fee that was equivalent to the adjacent sanitary sewer tap-on fee area. One developer did not agree to it, and that was the negotiated solution at the time, and one developer did, apparently, because the annexation agreement indicates that in this particular instance, it will be paid by the developer.
So we had talked a little bit before the meeting, and you hadn't seen that annexation agreement? Did you pull it up? Does it say specifically that they agreed to pay the sanitary sewer tap-on fee?
At the time of final planning, buyer shall pay the required tap-on fee for the area platted.
And is that different than the other developers' annexation agreement?
I would assume, I only looked at this one, which applies to the action item tonight.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put this on the record in case there's a discrepancy, or in case, in case they're both similar annexation agreements, and one got charged and one didn't. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye, and the resolution is approved. We have no general orders or new business tonight, so before taking a motion for adjournment, do we have comments or concerns? Ms. Cummings?
Sure. I feel like I have a long list, so please put the timer on so that I don't go over my 10. I guess I'll start off with some of the lighter things first, and then I'll get into some other stuff. First of all, I wanted to thank and congratulate the CDM, I don't even know if they're still here for the day of play this weekend. If you have nothing to do, stop by for the Sugar Creek Arts Festival, because that will be taking place. Also, I am so excited to announce with the acceptance of all eight applicants who applied to Youth on a Mission, they will be our first group for 2021, 2022 program year, and we are excited to have them. You all will know more about them as the time comes, but we are excited to announce that there are eight students who have signed up and will be a part of Youth on a Mission, which I think it leads so appropriately to my next set of comments tonight. For those of you who may still be watching, for those of you who still may be within the room, or the chamber, whatever you want to call our space here tonight. There is much to be said at this time, and I think there's so many nuances within what's going on. And so I'm going to take my time a little bit, and I want to go through each thing individually, if that's okay. First, I want to say that anytime there's a loss of a human life, it's always a tragedy. If you've ever lost someone you loved, you know how deep the pain can go. However, that is not lost on anyone who's ever lost someone before. At the same time, it's even more painstaking when we utilize those moments of pain, frustration... At the same time, it's even more painstaking when we utilize those moments of pain, frustration, to build a political platform. And that breaks my heart. Sorry, give me a moment. It is heartbreaking to know that not all steps were properly taken. But that is, I want it to be very clear. The town of Normal was not handling that investigation. I'm not saying it to throw anyone under a bus, but I want that to be clear. The decisions that were made were not due to Normal Police Department. Anytime there's a missing persons case, it is within the jurisdiction of where the person I understand he went to school here, and I understand he has friends here, and possibly some family that live within the area. We know that there, you know, we have been made privy to at this point, at this time, that there may have been some other things that could have been done. And I am aware of people who fought to get the right people to make the right moves. And to me, those are the ones that you don't know and you don't see because it wasn't political for them. It was really about what could be done to move the case along. And so it wouldn't have taken so much time. And yet, it's still an open case until they find out exactly what happened at that time. So I want that to be known and clear. The next piece is, we understand in moments like this, emotions are very high. And for some people, it's easy to get caught in the moment. When the portrait, because that's exactly more so what it was, the portrait was taken down, it was done within proper context at the time, meaning the staff person did their job that day. However, understanding some other issues, or I won't say issues, but other things surrounding that particular portrait, some additional steps were made. At this time, it is framed, from my understanding, and there has been conversation to include or to transition to Illinois State University. And as of my last communication, Illinois State University is in contact with the family. Now, I'm hearing that other people are as well, and that's good. And my understanding is that Illinois State University will coordinate the final place in which the portrait will be. If the family so chooses to allow it to remain public, and it stays within Illinois State University, I think the best option would be within their new multicultural center, which is to open soon, or have its grand opening soon. None of this is ever easy, and we know that in this particular case, that some things have exacerbated the emotions in this moment. But not also, but not, let's not politicize this to be able to find a way to point fingers and create a platform. If you really want to do good, support the mother, actually be there for her. Matter of fact, maybe be there for her on Christmas morning, when the pain is the deepest. Give her something that even a portrait couldn't give her. That's how you support her. How you get justice is to make sure that you're asking the right questions to the right departments to make sure that the investigation can no longer be, I don't want to say botched, but prolonged. That's probably the best way to put it. The best way to get answers is to get active in the right way. Use our energy in the best way possible. And sometimes it does mean rolling up our own sleeves and finding out what is it we can do to be of help. And sometimes you have to be okay with your name not being in the paper or your face not being on the news to do it. So my ask is for those who have the bleeding hearts, write a beautiful love letter to his family, something that they can look at over and over again to know that they aren't forgotten either. That's the best way you can take this moment and do some real good, and do something that'll be memorable and forever planted within their hearts. I thank you for the time.
Ms. Smith?
My apologies for following such heartfelt words, but there are some matters that I think citizens would welcome the news about, given the messages we received tonight. As many may be aware, the town of Normal is in receipt of some funds from the American Rescue Plan. And as the majority of municipalities across the country, we have been thoughtful in what to do with those monies. And at the present time, what has been discussed are dollars towards physical, mental, and behavioral health, as well as providing broadband to underserved areas. All of these areas are ones that the pandemic highlighted the disparity in wealth distribution in our communities. The council will be holding a work session in the near future and is seeking citizen feedback. And the town has developed a survey that will seek input on priorities that citizens may have within the buckets that these funds are restricted to be used towards. So if you could watch your email to look for that survey and respond promptly so that we can include your voice in our discussion. And if you don't receive it, feel free to write us. All of the council members and the mayor's address are available on the council website at normal.org. And another bit of good news for a population that suffers from income disparity, I just want to share that Governor Pritzker today signed an executive order removing subminimum wage as being permissible for state contractors who employ disabled workers in their services to the state. And I know that's very welcome news to a community that are very, very good workers. They do so much with the limitations that they have, and it's welcome news to them and their family to see them gain a greater level of income independence. So I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Sure, thank you. Back in March of 2020, we voted to increase the water rates for everyone. During that discussion, I went back and played it, so about an hour and 26, and if anybody wants to go watch it and listen. Mr. Mayor, you said that the scheduled increase was for, wow, let me just play it because it's pretty short. And I think you can read it, Mr. Nord, and we'll get the opinion.
Yeah, point of view. ... sewer fund are enterprise funds. And what that means is, what those dollars are is the actual cost of delivering and maintaining service to get water to your home. There is no fluff in that fund. It's what that costs to deliver water. To reiterate, though, it's not good practice to mix those funds. All those revenue sources you talked about would go to the general fund, and not appropriate to send to the water sewer fund. It's just not good accounting practices.
And then the town manager talked about the water fund as well, so...
Certainly, we are capable, we have the ability to move money between funds. We would, staff would say, this is absolutely not a best practice, and we would not recommend moving money from the general fund to support one of the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds have been functioning for decades and decades, and based upon the, predicated on the assumption, and they were created as enterprise funds with, as Mayor Kuss just indicated, revenues supporting expenses. So consumption and being charged for consumption is what's reinvested back into the system.
So, you know, we had that conversation, that enterprise funds from the water fund are supposed to go towards water purposes. Well, last council meeting, we voted to spend $81,000 of money from the water department to buy snowplow equipment. You know, that is something that I think the average person would think is not related to delivering water as a consumption fee. And my concern, which is actually a concern that Ms. Reese had brought up, is this...
Have the ability to move money between, if that would be a one-time thing or a multi-year thing, but if multi-year, then certainly you have voided the enterprise fund, how it was established as being a utility. Both the water fund and the sewer fund function as utilities, and that's why we have been very cautious over the years to manage those separately.
So since now we're co-mingling expenses in the water fund, I'm concerned, going forward, if this happens too often, are we going to end up voiding or having some problem with this enterprise fund? Because other council members have brought up, too, things in the water fund that, you know, possibly it would be illegal to transfer things back and forth. And that is a concern. Now, the town is potentially going to be earning a lot more money in the water fund if Rivian expands and they start using water. With that water extension that we have going out there, the sewer, the town submitted to Bloomington Water Reclamation Department that there's about another, almost, oh, I guess it's just over 2 million gallons per day of capacity. And if we serve that water, that water fund is going to grow very, very large. And then we will have some decisions to make as to what we do with all the excess revenue in that fund. So it's a concern now. I know it's just the one time that I've experienced, but I wanted to bring this up as a concern because now we've got one on the record where we've bought snowplow equipment, which I just can't bring myself to believe that that's a water department legitimate expense for providing water. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Mr. McCarthy?
Oh, I'm already out. Yeah, a couple of things. One, I'll start on the lighter stuff, I guess. The Day of Play in Uptown Normal, I don't know, I assume many staff had the opportunity to attend, but coming out of a pandemic, it was a blazing success. And I talked to, I'm not in the mic, I'm getting that. How unusual, I can't be heard. But it was a fabulous success for those that didn't have the opportunity. And I just wanted to thank staff. The citizens were coming up thanking me, those that recognized me as a member of this board, and I tried to deflect the credit to where it really belonged. I was there for a couple of hours, staff was there for a day or so. And then when it was all over, if you hung out, you just watched this group of people just descend on Uptown with trailers and pickup trucks and worked for, it seemed like hours, but it really wasn't that long, and everything was gone off the street, and it was clean, and it was wonderful. It was amazing coordination of effort from many departments to see. And a lot of citizens were out there enjoying it, a lot of kids smiling and having a good time. And I think it's certainly a wonderful opportunity that we're creating, certainly worth the investment of our staff time. And also, thank you to the organizations that were out there and the sponsors that helped fund some of the helmet giveaways and some of the things that the kids were able to actually walk away from the worldwide Day of Play with, not to mention great educational opportunities. So thanks to everybody. I won't name departments because invariably I will miss somebody. So, but thanks, fantastic day out there. I do want to mention again, I mentioned it last meeting, but I'll mention it again, this Saturday, October 9th, is the McLean County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Drive. It is an appointment-only opportunity this year, and I just looked on the website this afternoon, and just a few time slots are left. So if you've got household hazardous waste that you need to do something with, and it's been sitting in the corner of your garage or your basement, now's your chance. But get out to hhwmclean.org, and you can sign up for a time slot and get it taken care of as well. I guess, you know, maybe there's something that we as a group can talk about as we go I think when we start using terms like co-mingle and enterprise funds, they, those words mean specific things, and nobody co-mingled anything in our enterprise funds. So I just would ask for caution and discretion in the word choice when we're on the public mic, speaking to the public, because that has an actual definition, word co-mingle. So I would hope that we wouldn't do that. I won't rehash. We had a pretty specific conversation about why the water department was buying that, and that it was their truck, and what that meant, and the water department would be using it. So I encourage anybody who has an interest in that item to go back and view the entire video, not just selected excerpts from certain meetings at certain times, but actually watch the actual context of that meeting, and you'll get a real clip picture of what the rationale was, and why that was done, and why that resided in the water department. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
I'll keep it brief. I do have one concern, but then I want to end on a positive, more complimentary note. Concern would be for staff to do some follow-up on Buildings 104 and 108 Beaufort that we own with things kind of in a holding pattern for those buildings. The owner of 106 is concerned about some maintenance issues with those buildings. So I would encourage staff to follow up with the owner of 106. He can get into more detail about his concerns. The complimentary, more positive note, and, you know, in light of our discussion earlier today, tonight, obviously, you know, this is a space where it should be that we raise up issues where we need to be better and get better and improve, and there are times where we need to be critical, and, you know, that's the role of this body at times. But let me take this moment to say on a more positive note, and let's not forget to remember how... how good in many ways this community is and lucky we are to have a very innovative and up-and-coming corporate partner in Rivian. And I, along with, I'm sure many of you, went to some of their customer outreach, and it was, it was very impressive. I think good corporate partners like that, and corporate as well as small business alike, you know, when we can make this place a good place to, you know, thrive economically and find ways to, you know, bring opportunity to everybody, we can be and we are a very good place. And so I don't want to lose sight of the good things about this community. And to the point of Rivian, I experienced something very unusual today, and I just want to share it. It was the first time that somebody who I was talking to over at a tailgate at a certain Big Ten school that I like to go to in Indiana, and these young people were in their 20s, they were grad students, and they said, "Well, where are you from?" And I said, "Normal." And I said, "You know, Bloomington Normal," because he kind of gave me this look of "normal." And I saw that he was from Pennsylvania, so I guess he wasn't totally sure. And I started to say things like State Farm and ISU, and he said, "Rivian, you're the place where Rivian is." And I said, "Yes, we are." So I encourage you, and I'm encouraging myself, when somebody says where you're from and they give you that look, Rivian. And State Farm and ISU too. But let's not forget Rivian. So thank you, Rivian, for all you're doing.
I'm just going to make a very brief comment and note of caution. I think Mr. McCarthy already did that. Mr. Nord, that was sloppy journalism tonight. It's very apparent that you had an opinion to express, and I appreciate that. But to cherry pick comments to reinforce your opinion is something that's happening in the journalistic world far too often, and I would encourage you not to do that again. I'm sorry, sir. Can you just hold that for a few minutes, and we'll be right with you? Further on? Comments? Motion for adjournment, please.
No move.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.